And if you can, stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, one under God, indivisible, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. There you go, one of those. Okay, at this point, Kelly, were you gonna do roll call?
No, I was doing roll call. Counselor Bolin.
Here.
Counselor Furlough.
Here.
Counselor Grizzle.
Here.
Counselor Reese Cam.
Here.
Counselor Steinhebel.
Here.
Counselor Stouter.
Here.
Is that you, Kim? Who is that?
Yes.
Okay, I thought you weren't gonna be at the meeting, so that, I was just confused. Okay, thank you. Okay, first up is a consent calendar. We have the agenda for tonight and the council minutes from June 10th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar for tonight. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The consent calendar is approved. And first up, we have a proclamation presentation. And this is for the ADA. It's the 30th year of the ADA. On July 26, 2020, the city of Lebanon will celebrate the anniversary of the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act 88, signed into law on July 26, 1990 by President George H.W. Bush, to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. The act expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers and changing perceptions and increasing participation in community life. The full promise of the act will be reached by remaining committed to continuing efforts to fully implement the act. On the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, join the city of Lebanon in celebrating and recognizing the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommitting our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Now therefore, I, Mayor Paul R. Aziz, do hereby affirm that the city will continue to work towards full ADA compliance. Okay, and next up, we have public comments. And since we have an electronic meeting, we asked for public comments ahead of time. And there was one that was sent to us, and I will read that one here. I think you all received that also in the mail. Or in the email, I should say, not email. You're all probably aware that this says, Dear City Council Members, and this is from Jeremy Gunther. You are probably all aware that our governor Kate Brown has recently mandated that all Oregonians are now required to wear masks when leaving their homes for any public building or business. You're probably also aware that as governor, her only power exists if we give it to her. In other words, it is each city's choice to either follow her rules or ignore them. As we have been following this disease and the scientific discoveries made around it, it has become rather apparent that it has many similarities in how it spreads and those, it targets the flu, which, and those it targets, as with the flu, comes and goes each year. As such, common sense would indicate that a response to this disease would follow a similar pattern to our response to the flu. Something that bothers me about this particular mandate from Governor Brown is obvious way in which it is taking new data and twisting it into a lie to support her current agenda. Specifically, the fact that the number of cases of Oregon is not increasing, but the number of tests we are administering is increasing. So rather than increasing cases, we are simply becoming aware of pre-existing cases whose side effects were so minimal that we did not know about them before. The obvious conclusion from this is that the disease is becoming less and less deadly from a scientific data perspective, the more cases, not deaths, that increased testing brings to light. The new mandate from Governor Brown not only ignores that rather obvious conclusion, it actually states the exact opposite. That somehow by simply administering a test, the disease has suddenly spread drastically, it's becoming a bigger threat than ever. I ask that you, as members of our city council, vote to reject this latest mandate from Governor Brown within our town. And we instead allow us to be guided by data and logic. Jeremy Gunther, MCP. Okay, is there any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next item. And first up, right out of the gate, we have a couple annexations. And the first one, we'll have Kelly Hart will be working on. And I will open the public hearing here. Good evening, this is the time and place set for the public hearing, the matter of planning file A20-03. A request by Travis Wager to annex property and establish the corresponding residential mixed density zoned RM zone. Your patience is appreciated as our city attorney goes to required hearing procedures.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna do this in a little bit abbreviated fashion, since we're doing these procedures in a little different way. We will still start out with the commencement with any of the counselors with any ex parte contact or conflict of interest. Then Kelly will give the staff report. We'll have questions of staff by counselor. The public testimony today, my understanding is that there is no public testimony. It was noticed and it was requested that any testimony be provided ahead of time in writing. My understanding is that there either was not any in writing or anybody that requested the opportunity to talk during the, during the meeting in favor or in opposition. So at that point, we will close the hearing and I'm not sure if the applicant is here. The applicant obviously has the opportunity to talk. We then close the public hearing and this council will then make a decision tonight. So it's a good time to ask all the counselors if they had any conflict of interest or ex parte contacts.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. At this point, the hearing is now open at 6:08 PM. I would say, is there anyone in the audience normally that objects to this notice that was set in case of jurisdiction's body? But we received none ahead of time, so we'll move on to the next one. Do any counselors wish to declare ex parte contact, conflict, or bias with this case? Okay, it does not appear that there is any of that. And will the community development director please present your staff report?
Yes, sir. Good evening, sir, members of the city council. Before you tonight is a proposed annexation of the property located at 820 Oak Street. The property is located within the city of Lebanon urban growth boundary and is designated for residential mixed density within the Lebanon comprehensive plan. Consistent with the requirements of the Lebanon Development Code, the land is assigned the corresponding residential mixed density zone upon annexation and the applicant accepts this automatic zoning designation. The Planning Commission had conducted a public hearing on this application on both June 17th and June 24th and found that the application complied with the decision criteria contained in the Lebanon Development Code and voted unanimously to recommend the council approve the annexation. In addition, in March of this year, the city council authorized an emergency sewer connection for this property and the connection authorization was contingent upon the annexation to, into the city. The Planning Commission order recommendation was provided in agenda to identify the recommended findings in support of this request. And so the recommended action tonight is to adopt the proposed ordinance authorizing the annexation of the subject property and assigning the zoning designation of RM residential mixed density. And with that, I'll conclude my reports. And if there are any questions you might have.
Okay, does the council have any questions of staff? At this time, we would normally ask for the applicant's testimony, but we haven't received any. That's fair, Kelly, nothing? Okay. So no testimony? Does council have any questions of the applicant? Obviously, you don't. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the annexation? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? The public meeting is now hereby closed at 6:11 PM. And all further discussion will be limited to council and staff at this time. Any other council discussion on this? Okay, will city attorney please read the title of the ordinance?
Started hitting buttons and all I could see was Frank Stevenson. I didn't know what was going on.
Oh, did you catch that? Trey, can you read the title of the ordinance?
Yep, I'm getting to it. A bill for an ordinance and annexing and zoning property following consent filed with the city council by landowners in said area pursuant to ORS 222.120 and ORS 222.170, file A20-03, Travis Wager. Ordinance bill number 2020-08, ordinance number 2948.
Vote for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, the ordinance has passed. We'll move on to the next. And that would be the annexation for street segments, and that'll be presented by Kelly Hart. Let me get my script here. And this is the time and the place set for the public hearing, the matter of planning file A20-02. A request by the city of Lebanon to annex various street segments. The city attorney will speak about the required hearing procedures.
Be the same, same procedures. And my understanding again is nothing was submitted and nobody has requested to speak. At that point, I would just ask for conflict of interest or bias.
Okay.
Or ex parte contact.
Ex parte. Okay, I will skip the next one. And do any counselors wish to declare ex parte contact, conflict, or bias in any of these cases? Okay, seeing none, will the community development director please present the staff report?
Yes, sir. Good evening again. Before you tonight is a city-initiated application for the annexation of various street segments within the city urban growth boundary area. This was initiated by the engineering and police departments in an effort to create a more appropriate city boundary for service and to provide the opportunity for the local police department to enforce parking restrictions on certain streets. The process is only inclusive of annexation of public rights away, and as such, there is no zoning designation that is identified for these segments. In addition, it is important to note, since we did receive quite a few inquiries about this, the annexation is limited to the public rights away only, and it does not impact private property that may have bought the right of way question. No private property is proposed to be annexed part of this application, and there would be no zone change or change in allowed uses on private property. Essentially, there would be zero effect on private property whatsoever. And so the recommended action tonight is to adopt the proposed ordinance, which would annex the identified street segments into the city. And with that, I can conclude my staff report and answer any questions. And technically, we do have the applicant here, which would be Ron Whitlatch. So if he would like to speak on the item, he can as well.
Okay, thank you very much, Kelly. Does council have any questions of staff at this time? Okay, I won't ask for the applicant's testimony unless you want to, Ron.
I can give you a long-winded testimony, but I think Kelly summed it up pretty good.
Okay, thank you. And let's see, we'll just skip that. And at this point, we'll close the public hearing at 6:16 PM. And all further discussion will be limited to council and staff. Is there any council discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, will the city attorney please read the title of the ordinance?
A bill for an ordinance annexing certain street segments into the city filed with the city council by the city of Lebanon pursuant to ORS 222.120 and ORS 222.170, file A20-02, city of Lebanon ordinance bill number 2020-09, ordinance 2949.
Call for a motion.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? All right, the ordinance has passed and public hearings are already been closed, so we're good. All right, item number three, regular session, budget levying taxes amendment presented by Matt Apken, finance director.
Mayor City Council, each year at the end of the year, we go back and look for people that haven't paid their utility services, mainly sewer and stormwater that don't have a water account for us to be able to turn off and collect payment. And at that time, we go back and we certify to the county the taxes, to the tax roll, the amount that they haven't paid. We're required to wait for six months after a calendar year to determine if they make any payments towards that. And at this point, they hadn't, and so we've got this resolution to update the resolution that we did at the budget time to certify these delinquent charges to the property taxes. It's gone up about $3,000 from last year, but overall, it's a pretty insignificant number on our property taxes.
So Matt, these are not people who are currently, like, because this is not COVID-related. These are people who were, who were delinquent last year.
Yes.
Okay.
And most of them are delinquent every year. They just, some people just never pay these because it's sewer and it's stormwater, and there's no way to force them to pay it through a normal utility bill. We can't turn it off. And so this is kind of the, the way that we're able to collect on these things is to certify it to the county.
Any other questions from council? Okay, seeing none, we'll have the city attorney read the resolution number name.
A resolution amending section one of resolution number 2020-11 to include delinquent sewer and storm drain assessments, resolution number 2020-16.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Matt. And motion is approved, or the resolution is approved. Okay, we'll temporarily adjourn as Lebanon City Council and convene as the Urban Renewal Agency. And this item is number four, amending section one of the resolution 2020-13 to correct requests for taxes for the Northwest Lebanon Urban Renewal District, Matt Apken.
Counsel, as you remember back through the budget process, we had gone through and made notion that we could underfund the Northwest Lebanon Urban Renewal District even more than we previously had been doing. There was an error in the paperwork that I submitted to council for the last one and noticed that as I was trying to fill out the paperwork for the county. And so I wanted to correct that to the $60 million in assessed value as opposed to the $105 million in assessed value. Everything else in the resolution is the same as it previously was.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Any questions from council? Okay, hearing none. We'll have the city attorney read the resolution.
A resolution amending section one of resolution number 2020-13 to correct requests for taxes for the Northwest Lebanon Urban Renewal District, resolution number 2020-07.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The resolution passes. And we will adjourn as the Urban Renewal Agency and reconvene as the Lebanon City Council. Number five, PFM Financial Advisors LLC Agreement, Matt Apken.
Mayor and council, I've been working, trying to figure out some different areas that we can get some improvement on and make some adjustments where needed. One of those was, it looks like we've got some debt that we could refinance and save some money for the city. I've talked with some other cities and their finance officers, trying to determine, okay, what's the best route of going about this? I think almost every single one of them recommended that we get a financial advisor that can help us through the process. They specifically know what they're doing in these refinances, and they do them frequently to make sure that they're done correctly. I reached out to several. I received some information back from Nancy Brewer from city of Corvallis. She's their finance director. And she said, you know, I really recommend these people. We've done a lot of different debt financing agreements with them. And so we've reached out to them and really would like your permission to enter into a contract with them to help us with refinancing some debt.
Thank, thank you, Matt. And questions from council?
No, I think it's a great idea.
So, sounds good. Okay, seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement.
Move to approve the agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement with PFM Financial Advisors LLC. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. State of Oregon grant agreement for reimbursement of COVID-19 expenses, Matt Apken, finance director again.
As you guys know, we've had a lot going on during COVID-19. The state came out and said we were able to get some money. They had us fill out a form, and then afterwards, they said, oh yeah, there's a grant agreement that goes with it. So, this was us going back through, reviewing the grant agreement and bringing to you for your approval so that we can get reimbursed thus far for about $93,000. There's additional funds that, as we go forward, this was only through May 15th expenses. There's about a month and a half of additional expenses at this point that we will likely be able to submit to them again for reimbursement.
Matt? Correct, yes.
This is Brent. Michelle Steinhobel appears to have dropped both her phone and video connections. Just an update when you're taking the next vote.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Matt, is there an end for this?
Is there a what?
Is there an end date when they will no longer accept expenses?
I think at this point, the federal awards program has opened it up through December 31 of 2020. It will all depend on if there is money left in the pot to, to get.
Just a quick, what were some of the things that we put on that list? Was it like the masks and PPE kind of stuff?
Mask, PPE stuff, the extra time off that we gave people related to COVID-19. When staff were specifically working on the COVID-19 stuff, they were getting, we were getting that reimbursed.
Lots of laptops.
Laptops from IT, things to work, telecommuting. Yeah, that was mainly what it was.
It'll be nice to get reimbursed. That'd be great. Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Hey, how you doing?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes in a Zoom fashion. Number seven, yes.
Counselor Steinhobel has just joined us here in the council conference room.
Hello.
We're back up to.
You're just like here and there. I'm confused now, but at least you're here.
Yeah, so was I, so.
Okay, so next up, CDB, CDBG Emergency Assistance Grant, Kelly Hart.
Kelly, you're muted.
I am. Dang it. Let's try that again. Oh, that's embarrassing. Before you tonight is a proposed intergovernmental agreement between the city of Lebanon and the city of Sweet Home. The city of Sweet Home is applying for an emergency service grant through the state to provide childcare services for frontline workers. And by doing that, they're partnering with the Boys and Girls Club of the Greater Santia Maria. The Boys and Girls Club operates multiple locations in Sweet Home and also in Lebanon. And as such, in order to provide the assistance through the Boys and Girls Club with the grant, the city of Lebanon would need to enter into an IDA with the city of Lebanon in order to have the grant administered at both locations for the Boys and Girls Club. The city of Sweet Home is the grant applicant. And if the funds are awarded, they would be the grant administrator and hold the records for the grant and have all the responsibility associated with the grant. So the recommended action tonight is to approve the IDA, and with that, I attempt to answer any questions.
Okay, questions? Well, I know that the Boys and Girls Club is hurting from COVID and kind of the repercussions of everything, so I think this will be really beneficial for them. Do you have any other questions, comments? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the CDBG Emergency Assistance Grant. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Mayor Oliver Stone, since I'm on the board.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. The motion passes. League of Oregon Cities Request for Top Four Legislative Priorities for 2021, Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So each year prior to the legislative session with the state, League of Oregon Cities puts out a survey of priorities that, you know, they give you a gamut of priorities that they'll work on. This year, you've got a list, I believe it was attached with this, and it was sent out to all the council to kind of give, to weigh in on beforehand of the priorities that we want the League of Oregon Cities to work on based on what Lebanon's needs are. You see the summary of the results on the, I think it's the third page of the, fourth page of the report. It looks like there's some, obviously, the increased budgetary flexibility during budgetary emergency, that's a mouthful. That, that ranked with a three, so three, three folks ranked that, and then there's several others. So it's probably a good time for a discussion for the council to decide what the other three priorities would be. Looks like there's COVID recovery is a two, infrastructure financing is a two, mental health services is a two, and photo enforcement is a two. So out of those, I would assume that we'd want to pick something else or whatever, wherever the discussion leads. So with that, I'll, I'll leave it to you guys.
Okay, discussion?
Generally, mental health delivery service is a county responsibility. And we don't have a city health department, so I would suggest that that not be one of our priorities.
Well, I'm not sure I agree with you on that, Robert, because, you know, we have the, we have the new treatment facility here in Lebanon. And, and I think it's an important thing for the community. You know, as COVID has come, you know, we work with the county, even though they're our health organization that is our health authority, we've kind of been on our own on some of this stuff, and that would be a concern of just leaving it up to them. I think it's something that's important from a city standpoint. And anybody else can correct if I'm wrong, you feel their part.
Well, go ahead.
No, please.
Well, I wasn't gonna chime in on that necessarily. I was gonna move on to another one that I felt strongly about, so.
Well, I was just gonna say, I guess, I don't know if I enter, if I take Robert to say that it's not important. It's just that the funds for the mental health piece comes from the county. I mean, I think that's where all that stuff gets funded.
Yeah, I know. It wasn't important. I was just suggesting that's where the funding is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. For, I, I mean, I, so, so are we starting with saying that increased budgetary flexibility, that was like, that's the no-brainer? Is that what we're starting with, this, Ron? Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, that, that had the most, I, I mean, if there's a discussion in those, I mean, there's nothing that says that we have to go this way. We were just trying to get a, a pulse on what it was so that we could make some, make some decisions.
I say, if we start, that makes sense to me, and then take three of the ones that have two, and let's just take those instead of taking this line by line. And, and so if we say that, then I'm gonna say COVID-19. And, and so if we say that, then I'm going to say COVID-19 economic recovery is going to be of absolute paramount importance this next year. I don't know how it's avoidable to not, to not request as a city that they talk about that. And infrastructure refinancing, infrastructure is is a pretty big deal when you talk about, I, my mind is on a lot of, like, with the pandemic and survival, then the earthquake and bridges. Our, our water infrastructure, that kind of thing, I think, is critical. So those are the two that I would say need to be added to that from my perspective.
I would agree.
I agree.
I agree. I agree.
Well, quick.
Well, it sounds like a pretty good consensus.
And I don't know what I don't know what they mean by photo enforcement, safety cameras, but I do not want those. So I'm going to say I don't want that on our list.
Well, remember that UTC's, the Uniform Traffic Complaint, also generates into the general fund. So don't, don't forget that.
Yeah, but I would be paying it, and I don't feel like.
And we depreciate it.
I don't like those. So.
But what are the ones then? So we've got I, D.
I, I gotta say that mental health service delivery, I think they're going to address that, or, or probably in some of their police reform that they're talking about, how to, how to address that mental health. If, if they're going to talk about, I don't want to talk about defunding the police in Lebanon. But if we talk about how do we take some of those mental health things out of the hands of the police department so that we, maybe there's a separate funding for a different, I don't know how they're going to talk about that. But I know that our police officers have to deal with a lot of mental health issues on the streets, and I would not be opposed to them talking about how we can do that differently.
Yeah, and this is the list for the LOC. The board sits there and looks at it and then, and then decides all these different cities, they come up with the numbers, and then they look at what are they going to be their legislative priorities? What are they going to legislate or work on and push for at the Capitol? So that's really what this list is. It's not super specific, even though it sounds like it as we're getting, you know, I think in the weeds, it's more of a generic, you know, like broadband, do you, is that an issue that is important to your city? So I, I think Rebecca's list is pretty good. The COVID-19, we got budgetary flexibility, infrastructure refinancing resilience. And then she mentioned mental health, and I did too. I would like to have it on the list, but it's up to you guys.
That's a good, we only need four, so that's a good four, I think.
Is that acceptable with everybody?
Yes. Yes, yes.
All right. Okay. There you go, Ron. You need anything else?
Nope, I think that'll, that'll get us going in the right direction. We'll get it off to them and hopefully we can make some progress on that stuff.
Thank you. All right. Next up, City Manager's Report. Ron Whitlatch.
Thank you, Jim, Mr. Mayor. Not a whole lot to report on, other than all the stuff that's going on inside the report itself. Happy to answer any questions. One thing that did come up, the city's auditor contract is up. And Matt can allude to it more if need be, but we're kind of proposing, and it's totally up to council, since the auditor works for the council, to go ahead and renew their contract this year, unless council would like to do something different, which would mean going out with an RFP for an auditor. But I'll leave that up to you guys. So we just kind of need to know consensus-wise, how you'd like to handle that.
From my knowledge of this, which is rape, but a little bit, the last one that we had, we had a lot of issues with, we had some difficulties with, and I haven't heard anything on this new one. So Matt, could you just give us a little brief rundown on how you've dealt with them and how they work with the city staff?
Yeah, I think overall, it's been really easy to work with our current auditor. Their contract is up in the term of it had an original three-year contract, but it also has two additional extension years if we want to use them. And that's kind of why we wanted to bring this to you is to make sure you were okay with that extension before we just go forward with it. I think with, with the pandemic happening and the possibility of changing software sometime, it's good to stay with the same auditor that we have.
That makes sense. Any other questions?
No, I would say it is good to, you know, a good, a good three, four, five-year run is, you're probably maxing out before you want fresh eyes on it. But I would agree, this time of COVID and a new system is not the time to shake that up, so. Yeah.
I agree with that.
Okay. Anyone else? Sounds like that would be something to go ahead and do. Yep. Anything else, Ron?
No, I think that's it, unless anybody's got any questions.
Okay. No, that's it. And items from counsel, I have something from Kim, who's asked me to present this and read this. The position of mayor and three city council positions will be on the November 3, 2020 general election ballot. City council positions are four-year terms, and the mayor serves a two-year term. The candidate filing timelines are from July 13, 2020 through 5:00 PM on July 31, 2020. Let me reread that. The candidate filing timelines are from July 13, 2020 through 5:00 PM on July 31, 2020. City officials with terms expiring December 31, 2020, Mayor of Lebanon Paul Lazeese, Counsel Ward One, Robert Furlough, Counsel Ward Two, Rebecca Grizzle, Counsel Ward Three, Jason Bowlin. To be qualified for candidacy, you must be a qualified elector residing within the ward. Council positions have resided in the City of Lebanon for six months immediately preceding the election on November 3, 2020, and are not an immediate family member of a city employee or a seated elected officer. Candidates can file by saving, paying a $25 fee or file a petition SEL 121 that has signed at least 25 active registered voters residing within the appropriate ward. SEL 121 candidate signature sheets must be approved by the city recorder before circulating. After you have collected at least 25 signatures, you must submit the signature sheets to Lynn County Elections so the signatures can be verified. The deadline on which to pay the fee or file completed paperwork is no later than 5:00 PM July 31, 2020. Please call the city recorder at 541-258-4905, or email Kim Schaefer to schedule a time to go over the paperwork process, and Kim's email is right on our city website. So with that, is there anything from the press?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Do we have anybody else on from the press? Is it just Sarah? We have less here?
No, we do not.
Okay, just checking. Okay, next scheduled meeting, August 12, 2020, 6:00 PM, regular session. And we'll just kind of see how it plays out. If things are exactly the same as they are today as far as COVID, do you want to have an in-person meeting, or would you rather stick with a Zoom meeting next month? I called, I made the call this time, kind of checked around a couple of councils just to see it, just felt like it would be safer not to do a full-on meeting in public. But I want to get your guys' input on that.
I think we should stay with the Zoom meeting.
Okay.
I, I would like to see counselors at the train station, but still not open it to the public, because I don't think that we'd be able to just not have the ability. It would be too close, but I think we could spread ourselves out enough to be able to, you know, keep our distance.
Okay.
So I'd like to see just the counselors go back to the train station.
Okay. And then maybe it's a possibility that we can have any counselors who don't feel comfortable coming in to do Zoom on that portion, or at least phone in to be able to do that, since now the technology's a little bit better than we tried about eight years, was it eight years ago, I think. It's a nightmare when we tried doing that during one meeting. It's a lot better than it was.
Did you? Yeah, I, I agree. It would be nice to do some sort of a hybrid where, you know, come if you're comfortable, public can see us and, but still do public input electronically, because I don't know what the capacity of that room is COVID-wise, but it doesn't seem like, once you have staff and council in there, you got to be maxing out pretty quickly. So some sort of a hybrid would be much better than this.
That makes sense. Ron, you and I and Kim could work on that, get that set for next month.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. At this point, we're recessed the regular session. We'll take just a few minutes. You need to take a quick break, and we'll clear out the chambers of anybody who doesn't need to be in the executive session that's coming right after.